Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 22nd day of April 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivon.
Present.
All right, everybody is here. All right, so we are going to start with a review of the draft agenda for the April 27th meeting. We will follow at 11 o'clock with an update on the Pyrrhus or Pierce Consular House, as well as a proposal from the village for an organic garden. And then we have several other items, alarm billing on the schedule, updates and executive session as well scheduled for today. So if you could all take a look at the draft agenda for April 27th, there's also some add-ons to this. And this will be a 6:00 PM meeting. This will be done by video teleconferencing. It will be done by Zoom. And it'll occur at 6:00 PM. And let's see, we have one public hearing. Public hearing to consider authorizing enforcement action at 6 Long Neck Boulevard, Flanders, New York. And then we get into resolutions and we have a number of those. So Councilwoman Skivoni, want to read the first?
Yes. Hold on, I don't have the right document in front of me right now. I'm on our special meeting agenda, so if you would read it for me, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. It's a resolution 36424 adopts town one-year agricultural use agreement for '21 and 2022. The second one's mine, 36402, it authorizes above-ground fuel and fluid storage with related hardware, software and services from EJ Ward, Inc., using Sourcewell contract. 36407 authorized hiring the firm of Redland Strategies, Inc. for review and guidance on Southampton Town procedures. 36356 authorized purchase of infrastructure for portable radios from Motorola.
ID 36372 authorized purchase of liquid blended phosphates from Massapequa Water District contract with Charis Corporation.
36435 authorized supervisor to enter into agreement on behalf of the Flanders Northampton Ambulance District with the County of Suffolk to purchase fuel under the Suffolk County Fuel Management Program. 36354 authorized supervisor to sign 2021 contract extension with United Metro, United Corp. As primary and Quad Sinclair Fuel, Inc. As secondary for ultra-low diesel fuel. Is that name correct? United Metro, United Corp? Yeah, I guess it is. It's repeated again in the body, so I guess they're very united. All right, John, you have the next?
Town Board Resolution ID 36445 authorized the supervisor to sign a contract extension with Green Velvet Tree for west of the canal for vegetative disaster debris removal based on cubic yard or ton after a declared emergency.
36430 authorizes the purchase of mobile computing solutions, including ruggedized laptops, tablets, accessories and related technology products and services from the Omnia Partners contract with Panasonic and related resellers.
ID 36447 authorizes supervisor to sign 2021 extension and amendment with Oliver Packaging and Equipment Company as sole source provider of complete system packaging trays for senior services.
36446 authorized the supervisor to sign 2021 extension with Fox Land Surveying for the preparation of existing condition surveys together with meets and bounds description for potential parcel realignments in the hamlet of Hampton Bays.
Town Board Resolution.
Yep, go ahead.
Come on. Town Board Resolution 36438 authorized the supervisor to sign agreement with International Business Machines Corporation, IBM, for SPSS software for the youth bureau.
ID number 36444 authorized the supervisor to execute a license agreement with East Quag Beautification Committee for a garden at Bay Avenue Marina.
36443 authorizes the supervisor to sign a contract with SEAL Solutions. Provide professional services for cameras relating to license plate readers for the town's police department. 36895 authorizes the supervisor to sign a new agreement with Brisco Protective, formerly known as Bell Ringer, for 112 Old Riverhead Road, West Hampton, New York, West Hampton Beach, New York. 36436 authorize the supervisor to sign contract with Mac Tech Engineering and Geology PC for the Damascus Road landfill site.
ID 36448 authorized the supervisor to sign a contract with Upstate Leak Detection LLC to the Hampton Bays Water District.
Town Board Resolution ID 36439 authorized the supervisor to sign an extension for water quality grants with the Village of Sag Harbor for green infrastructure.
Resolution ID 36405, resolution authorizing a partnership with Habitat for Humanity of Suffolk County for the purpose of facilitating a residential drop-off of reusable materials at North Sea Transfer Station.
Town Board Resolution ID 36449, the 2021 notice to bidders for vegetative disaster debris removal based on cubic yard or ton after declared emergency east of the Town Board Resolution ID 36394, third notice to bidders for acceptance of town of Southampton North Sea landfill, Leach Eight wastewater.
36395 amends the 2021 adopted budget for building and zoning department. 36434 amends the 2021 budget for various departments. 36422 amends the 2021 through '25 capital budget for video surveillance. 36441 authorizes payments to Suffolk County for total county bus.
36374 appoint Christine Taylor to Hampton Bay Citizen Advisory Committee.
ID number 36396, co-sponsor of Councilwoman Skivon, authorized the town of Southampton to secure all structures, remove excess excessive overgrowth of vegetation at 6 Long Neck Boulevard.
36429, resolution of adoption, amending town code chapter 323 to extend the Schinacock Hills Moratorium for three months.
Town Board Resolution, I'm sorry?
Good.
Town Board Resolution ID 36426, resolution of adoption, amending town code 330-5 definitions of chapter 330 zoning, dad definitions for non-aviation and distribution industry. Town Board Resolution ID 34496, a resolution of adoption, amending town code, chapter 330 zoning, section 183 site plan elements. Do I address rainstorm retention and I require recycling containers on site plan within the town?
Town Board Resolution ID 36390, co-sponsor of Councilwoman Lobstad. The resolution of adoption, amending Southampton Town Code, chapter 330-210 miscellaneous provisions of Article 22, signs to require removal of obsolete signs and their supporting structures 14 days after the use or activity they have identified has ceased.
Resolution ID 36437, resolution acknowledging active military and veteran discount card program.
36392 accepts resignation of a deputy tax receiver in the tax receivers office. 36391 accepts resignation of a public safety dispatcher, one in the police, in police communications. 36409 accepts resignation of an ordinance inspector in public safety. 36431 adopts town public health emergency operations plan. 36204 authorized acquisition of lands of Island Creek Properties LLC, Calnek Holdings LLC and Jerry Mander Holdings LLC, North Sea and amends the CPF Management Institute plan to include those properties. 35640 authorized acquisition of lands of Teresa A. Bauer Revocable Trust, Flanders, and amends the CPF Management which should plan to include that property.
Town Board Resolution ID 36425, road review application for 499 Broadway LLC situated at North Sea is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID 36421, road review application for Blue Sea Adventures LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map as indicated, situated Neuyak is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID 36423, road review application for Ruben Gutierrez, Suffolk County Tax Map as indicated, situated Hampton Bays is accepted. Town Board Resolution ID 36420, road review application for Take-Two Capital LP, Suffolk County Tax Map as indicated, situated at West Hampton is accepted. That's the last one.
All right, then we have two other add-ons that both sponsored by Councilwoman Martel. Rick, do you want to read those?
Sure. ID number 36450, resolution acknowledging receipt of petitions to improve Old Farm Road between Narrow Lane and Haynes Path Sagaponic pursuant to section 200 of the New York State Town Law and ordering a public hearing to consider set improvements and requesting the acceptance of same into the town highway system. ID number 36451 is a resolution of adoption enacting town code chapter 262 entitled Registration of Foreclosure Mortgage Properties.
All right, anybody have any questions about the agenda?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to be added on as a co-sponsor Sunday to 36435. That's the Flanders Ambulance District Chair purchasing fuel.
Could you tell me the page number?
That's going to be great.
Could you tell me the page number, please?
Oh. No, I have to find it.
Okay, well, we'll find it. Tell me again, it's the
Okay. 36435.
Okay, 36435, we'll find it.
That's on
Okay, and 364?
It's on page six, 435.
It's, you're freezing. Just say it one more time.
Uh, the resolution that the councilman wants to co-sponsor is on page six.
Okay.
Was there something else? I heard another voice. Tommy, Tom, was there a second thing you had to, you wanted to co-sponsor?
Yeah, but my internet is not good for this, so let's, let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, you can always do it on the floor as well.
Okay.
Okay, so
Or you can just email me.
Okay.
So Sunday, you're good, good to go with the
Yes, thank you.
All right. So that brings us to 10:24. We have the other item scheduled for 11:00, so we might as well do updates. We got through the agenda pretty quick, so let me see, I guess we don't have Ryan on. Maybe we can get him on later. I think he may be away this today, though he did talk about coming back, I think, right around today. So does anybody have any updates? I know we just did this recently.
Yeah, one.
Julie?
Sure, I just wanted to let everybody, everybody know that this Saturday, April 24th, is National Drug Takeback Day. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the locations are at the Hampton Bays Community Center, Flanders Community Center and the Southampton Town Substation at Bridgehampton Commons. If you need more information, you can call the police department at the non-emergency number 631-702-2254. So please go through your medicine cabinets and get rid of all that expired and other stuff you don't use, and let's dispose of them properly. Thank you.
Ryan is on. Well, Ryan is on.
Jay, I'm on if you need me.
All right, Ryan, do you want to bring us up to date on any COVID-related matters?
There really isn't anything significant to update on with regards to COVID since our last meeting. I would just say that the numbers are continuing to trend in the right direction. We've heard from the hospitals, the same thing, that their numbers are, are decreased from where they were and holding, if not continuing to decrease, so that's also a good sign. The vaccination information update would be that the governor's office has released guidance that I believe its folks 60 and over are going to start, if not today, then very shortly, to be able to just go to vaccine sites that are state vaccine sites without an appointment as a walk-up individual for a vaccine. So that's a, that's kind of a big change that we are shifting to the capability for seniors to be able to go for a walk-up vaccine if they haven't already been taken care of. Outside of that, we're continuing to await hopeful changes to the catered event guidance as far as residential properties go. Catered event guidance does not apply to residential properties right now. Residential gathering numbers are still limited to 10 people indoors and 25 people outdoors. That's very restrictive for a lot of the large parcels that we have within the town of Southampton, and we're hopeful that there might be some changes to that. There has also been guidance released for traveling carnivals and similar activities. So we would encourage people that if they are planning events like that to make sure to check the, the guidance numbers. But again, I would, I would go back specifically, we're seeing applications come in for tented events at private properties, and we just need to make sure that people do understand that residential properties right now do have restrictions of 10 indoors, 25 outdoors. Please don't refer to the non-essential gathering numbers of 100 indoors and 200 outdoors for the purposes of planning an event at a residential property. We cannot approve that until the guidance changes as of right now. We have to stick to the residential gathering limits when we look at these event proposals and tent submissions and things like that to make sure that they're in line with the current guidance from the state. I, I think that's it unless anybody has any specific other, you know, COVID-related questions.
Any questions for Ryan? All right. Thank you, Ryan.
Not a problem, and yes, I am back.
Oh, good. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Other updates?
I just have one. We in West Hampton Beach tomorrow, actually, they're having a press conference to celebrate sixth year in the making hookup to Gabreski Sewer Treatment Plant. So the engineering's been completed and they're getting ready to start that. I don't have a schedule, but we've been working with the county and with the village board. It's, everyone's really excited that this is finally, finally coming to fruition.
What time is that?
One o'clock.
One o'clock tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
In West Hampton Beach?
Yes.
In the
Historical.
What's that?
It's, it's, it's behind the historic, historical society building. That's where they're meeting. That's the only detail I have.
Okay, and that, that's to kick off the sewer project?
Yes.
Okay, I have a, a noon Zoom, but I'll somehow try to figure out how to also get one o'clock to West Hampton. Okay. Wait, any other updates that Councilwoman Skivon?
Yes, this month at the Southampton Town Chiefs, Fire Chiefs Council, we brought up an issue that we had been working on before the pandemic, and that is coverage of the 800 megahertz system throughout Southampton Town. And that's something that we're going to be resuming now that the pandemic is somewhat subsiding. I should knock wood here, but we are going to be putting together a committee to explore the connectability of the various fire districts and their operations and the role of the Southampton Town Fire Marshal's Office. And in case of emergency, we're going to be including the police department in that as well. And as you may know, our fire districts were required to upgrade their radio systems using the 800 megahertz system, and some of them are unable to use those systems despite the fact that they actually have the equipment in the truck. So they're using the older systems. They're using it well, but we're going to try to straighten that out. Also, the Bridgehampton CAC is going to be presenting the, well, we are going to present, Ms. Green, our town historian, is going to present to the Bridgehampton CAC the historic district proposition. So it should be interesting if people want to come and take a look at it, they can log into the meeting. That's going to be by Zoom.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Any other updates? I do have a next week Department Heads Meeting. I do that somewhat quarterly. So I started to go over a lot of different issues, things that are going on, capital projects, work-from-home policies, those kinds of things, getting through COVID and some of the changes. Hopefully, some things are going to start to change in terms of the senior centers starting to open in some capacity in a couple of days, early May. So, you know, slowly but surely, we will start to get a little bit closer to normal, but it's going to be a long time before we see whole occupancies and without some of the, the mask wearing and things like that. I think we're pretty far from that. Okay, any other, any other updates?
We do have a CAC meeting tonight in Hampton Bays. We're having Brian Polite and members from his committee representing the Schinacock Nation talking about some of their upcoming projects. So if anybody wants to tune in, be a good time to ask questions.
That's that, I'm sorry, Hampton Bay CAC?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, let's see how we're doing. It's 10:30. How could that be? Is my clock right? We are only a half an hour into the meeting?
Yep.
10:33. Now, we still don't have an item till 11 o'clock.
Is Sean on? Maybe Sean's available.
Sean for the false alarm billing?
Correct.
You want me to say? Is he in the office?
Sure. He's in. He is in?
Yes.
All right, are we okay with moving that part of the agenda forward? I'm afraid some of the people from the village may not be on until 11:00, since we had that scheduled for 11:00. So why don't we, why don't we try to take the false alarm billing legislation? Because there's quite a bit to talk about with this. So Sean, are you prepared to jump in here?
I am. Yes, good morning, everybody. So we have been discussing creating an alarm registry. It's a voluntary program, or it's proposed to be a voluntary program. And in addition, we would, so we have this category of intentional false alarms. We would include nuisance alarms as a per se intentional alarm. Nuisance alarm meaning, say you get an instruction from the Public Safety Commission or the Fire Marshal to say move a smoke detector that's too close to a stove or something like that. We'd include that as a written directive as a way to enforce this. So we'd have a letter going out from the Fire Marshal or Public Safety Commission directing an action and failure to abide by that directive would result in an additional fine, a percentage added on to whichever alarm sequence that would be. So that's one portion of this. It would be a 5% surcharge in addition to an amount. The registration itself would essentially eliminate the first free alarm for people and impose $100 fine for fire alarms and a it was a $400 fine for, it was 100 for police alarms and excuse me, I'm sorry, 100 for fire alarm and 50 for a police alarm for the first instance. Previously, those were no charge. The no charge first alarm would now be something included within the voluntary schedule, and that's one of the perks. In addition, right now, we have a 60-month look-back period for determining whether it's your second, third, subsequent alarm. Voluntary program.
So it's 60 months, five years, yeah?
Correct. The voluntary program for people that opted would only have a 24-month look-back. So there would be several benefits, both to homeowners and to the town for enacting this type of legislation. It makes it easier for the town to track who has alarms, when these things are going off, and the reasons why they're going off, whether legitimate nuisance or false alarms. For homeowners, if they're opting in, they have this benefit of a free, you know, basically a freebie if it goes off once on its own. And this look-back period is essentially reducing fines over time. So it's incentivizing participation in a program that works both for the town and for the homeowner to essentially keep an inventory of exactly what type of alarms are occurring within the town.
There's a fee, though, to register.
There would be a fee, correct. It would be, and one of the things we had discussed was making this a biennial $100 registration fee, coming out to $50 a year, and encouraging people to register every two years. So every other year, they'd be paying this fee, which is the equivalent of the first false alarm fee right now. So an additional reason to incentivize people. I'm sorry if I went a little quick there. Does anybody have any?
Okay, we pulled you in early. Let me say a word or two on this, too. So the, the current system, if the fire department or the police respond to a false alarm at your property currently, you, you get the first one of each police or fire free. And after, after that, there's a fee, and it gets higher and higher with, with each false alarm. And we look, we consider the last five years as the window. So if you had a, you had a false alarm five years ago, and you get one today, it would be your second false alarm. Of course, if you had four of them five years ago, and you get one today, you know, it's considered your fifth. So it's pretty long look-back period, and it gets pretty expensive. So the idea is almost like an insurance policy. If you, you register with us, you pay the $50 per year, we'll give you one for free. We're going to take away the free alarm if you don't register. So the very first one, you'll, you'll get charged for it. You won't get charged for the first one if you're in our program. And we'll only go back two years. Anything beyond two years, we won't consider in terms of charging you for. So a lot of areas have adopted similar types of things. It, it, it helps
It, it helps in terms of speedy response. We can collect information like gate codes and things like that that might make it easier for, you know, a fire department to get to the house. So, you know, these are seen positively, there's registrations, nobody has to register. They can stick to the current program. But if they want to, it, it sort of serves as an insurance policy. Yes, they'll pay $50 a year, but they're unlikely to have those very large surprising fees from, you know, a defective burglar detector, you know, or a smoke detector that you might get currently. So, all right, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Supervisor, it's Ryan Murphy. If, if, if it's possible, just to comment on this as well from the emergency services perspective. I think what you indicated just a second ago is, is one of the most important things to focus on with regards to this desired code change. And that is that when, when emergencies happen, seconds count. And, and I think we all understand and know that. Anybody that's been through an emergency, minutes seem like hours, seconds seem like 15, 20 minutes, which seems like a response time that might take forever. And then when you, when you run the reports afterwards, it turns out it's, you know, only two or three minutes later, but it seems like an eternity. One of the things that can have a huge impact on the ability of first responders, whether it's the Police Department responding to a burglary, burglary alarm, or the Fire Department responding to a, a fire alarm activation, or, or even some sort of a, you know, Life Alert style type EMS call. One of the things that makes the job of the first responders that much better, that much faster, their ability to, to stop a, an emergency from happening, to interrupt that, is having the right information and having the best information available when in route, when responding to a call. Having to wait at a gate to, to try and have it be able to open, having to try and struggle to identify who the appropriate alarm system provider is, to be able to identify which smoke detector head in a facility, in a, in a residence is the activated head to try and stop that from happening and get people back into a structure and, and back to operation faster. That's what the, one of the biggest goals of this, this registration or this optional registration system is, is to get that, the best information about the current alarm system into the hands of the first responders by way of 911 dispatch so that we can help the people in need as fast as humanly possible. Right now, we don't necessarily have accurate or right information for a lot of alarm systems that are out there within the community. And when properties change hands, when people decide they want to shift from one company to another, we lose track of that information. And then those, those, those pieces of missing information turn into seconds or minutes of delays or interruptions in the emergency response process. So this, this desired system, this proposed system that we're looking at here, this code change to allow for people to participate in a registry system is, is really essential in us being able to do our jobs and respond to things as quickly as possible. The benefits of participation, as everybody has outlined already, are less of a lookback period because false alarms, accidental activations, those types of things do happen. And a five-year lookback is a lo, is a long time, all right? So people don't have to participate, but then they, they are subject to the longer lookback period if they're not one of the participants in this system. And the, the decreased fine schedule for false alarm activations as participants too is another benefit to people participating and making sure that we have the best information available to do a good job responding to their emergencies. So I think, just wanted to comment on this from the emergency response perspective to stress the importance of, of us trying to implement a system like this so that we have the best information.
If I could add on the tail end of that, as Ryan mentioned, properties do change hands, and we know we have a lot of landlords out in this community. This is a great way to ensure, say you're signing a two-year lease. This is a great way as a LSE to ensure you're not getting stuck with somebody else's subsequent first alarm on your property. This is a great program for a landlord that you have tenants that, you know, this person may have been directed, don't cook this way or move this alarm or whatever. But your new tenant might not have any knowledge of that. So imposing this two-year lookback is very favorable if you're a rental property owner as opposed to the five-year lookback. And then you're into this, you know, these fine structures where, you know, one tenant may be paying for the failures of the last. This voluntary program kind of, it, it gives an equitable remedy to that type of situation.
Sean, although we're eliminating the one free alarm firing and CD, if you don't do the registration, we have made the fee though for that first one lesser.
We have, yeah, so the first alarm fee for the fire alarms would be $100, and the first for the police is $50. So not an exorbitant fine, very reasonable fine. And the fees for this program, as we mentioned, are essentially, it comes out to $50 a year. So this is a worthwhile investment.
Right, now can somebody, can somebody, let's say somebody isn't in the program, can they switch into it? So let's say they, they get a $50 alarm, can they use that toward registering?
I think as a general policy, we, we could set this up to be that way. There's nothing prohibiting that. And I think the Public Safety Commission, which I also sit for, they're in a practice of, they have somebody come in and dispute their first alarm fine quite often. So that could be a condition of setting back the counter. Proof of enrollment in a voluntary program, they can reset your counter to zero, and then you'd move forward in that program. And I could work with the Public Safety Commission to draft a letter to do that.
Sean, does this legislation have definitions of various fire calls? Unfounded, false alarm?
Well, so we have an existing code section. For purposes of this discussion, we've added a definition for nuisance alarm in 853B2. So basically giving an example of instances of smoke from cooking as directed by a Fire Marshal Police Department. It's failing to abide by directives to modify or relocate alarms triggered by nuisance situations, including but not limited to instances of smoke from cooking as directed by Fire Marshal Police Department or Public Safety Commission shall be deemed an intentional false alarm.
So we have. Right, and there's a public, there's a, there's a public safety aspect to that. We certainly wouldn't want our first responders to say, oh, it's this such address again, where it's a nuisance, nuisance alarm, you know, they get used to that. And it could very well be something more serious. So we want people to move their alarms or fix them or whatever they need to do so they don't keep going off. And so that our fire departments can be left in service to answer other calls as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a consideration behind this amendment.
Is the example of the smoke detector near the stove, you know, or the toaster, is a good example where, you know, if, if you burn toast, it sets off the smoke detector. It's not technically a false alarm, yet the fire department, you know, it's pretty expensive for them to, to respond to that type of situation. So we would, we wouldn't charge you anything because you're not, it's not a false alarm. It really was smoke, the smoke detector did exactly what it's supposed to. But then we tell you to relocate it and you don't, and the next time you burn toast, you know, I think at that point, we're going to, you know, that's why we created this nuisance thing, to address that situation where we're telling somebody, you really need to fix this situation other, other, other than, otherwise you're going to keep triggering the smoke detector.
So I, I got a question, Sean, we, you know, this has been an ongoing problem since I've been here, certainly. And I know there's an appeal process, what happens with that with this code amendment?
Nothing, so the Public Safety Commission still exists, they still have their same role, the appeal process still exists. People have the right to come in and explain what these situations are. And that Public Safety Commission still has discretion to set back your alarm counting. So that, it, it doesn't affect that program at all. People just have to come in and explain their situation, and that board still does have discretion to reset that counter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Sean, is this just for residential or is also for commercial?
We, we haven't specified, so it's anyone with an alarm in the town. So we can further develop that if you'd like and make a different standard for commercial properties. But we have not specifically addressed commercial versus residential, residential.
Yeah, there's no distinction right now in the way it's written. So you could read, and I don't think, the pricing is not different, is it, in the?
It is not, no.
Commercial versus residential, I think at the counties it is. But I think ours treats all, all these alarms the same. Sean, have you met at all or discussed this with Robert Ross or anyone from the Public Safety Commission?
I did email back and forth with Mr. Ross, he indicated he would support a change like this. And he did disseminate this information to the rest of the Public Safety Commission for input. I did notify them that if this moves forward, obviously we'll have a public hearing process, and I have invited them all to speak.
Yeah, and you know, there's one thing that I haven't said that really should, should get said, you know, one of the reasons for amending this, the fees were becoming pretty onerous. You know, that five-year lookback. And without fixing this program, there could have been an incentive for people to disconnect their alarms. And that is a problem. We don't, you know, we don't want people doing that. We don't want people disconnecting their, you know, smoke detectors or burglar alarms for fear of getting a, you know, very steep false alarm bill. So we want it sort of to, to make sure that you wouldn't get in the situation of those really high penalties situations. And we've heard stories of people doing that. And that's, you know, that's frankly dangerous, so this hopefully will solve that problem as well. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Sean, for coming on, we, we still have eight minutes before our scheduled 11 o'clock.
You're very welcome, if the board supports this, I can start drafting a notice of public hearing and schedule this moving forward.
Yeah, I'd like that. Everybody okay with that?
I am, yes.
Supervisor Schneiderman, you'd be the sponsor, would anybody like to be a second? Okay, great, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Sean.
We, we have eight minutes, um, are there any other topics we can cover? I know one topic I've brought to you guys three times now, which you probably don't even want to hear about again, but we, we do ultimately have to make a decision in response to New York State and the New York State passing a law to legalize recreational marijuana. And there, there are a number of choices before us. Either we can do nothing, which would be then we would just have to regulate where it's sold, which would be, you know, these dispensaries, what zoning districts they could occur in. And the lounges, like a bar but for marijuana use, where those would occur. Do you want to limit them to industrial zones or would they be allowed in other commercial type of zones? That, so that's choice one. Choice two is you can opt out, subject to permissive referendum, which allows the public to gather signatures and put it on the ballot if they're so inclined. Or you can opt out and put it on the ballot. So it's skip the permissive piece and just go directly to a November ballot initiative. So the board would have to vote to opt out, but put the question on the ballot sort of for voter ratification. And if the, it's kind of an inverse question, so yes means no. So basically, if you're supporting the town opting out, you would vote yes. If you're against the town opting out of the sale, you'd vote no. So if you want marijuana to be sold in the town, you'd vote no. It's been made very clear the Shinnecock Nation intends to make it available for sale probably by the end of this year. No date certain, but I've spoken with the chairman there and it's a likelihood that it will be available for, for sale. And there's arguments on both sides of this, there are many people who have very strong opinions one way or another. But ultimately, the board has to make a decision, we don't have to make it today. But you guys really need to think this one through and decide if we want to put it on the ballot, there's a window of time by which the resolution has to pass. It can't be before a certain date or after a certain date. So it gets on the November ballot. If you pass it at a different time, you'd be requiring a sort of a special election, which is costly. So my recommendation is if you're going to, if the board's going to put it on the ballot, they should do it at the November election when the cost will be as, won't be any additional cost to that. Does anybody have anything they want to say at this juncture in terms of when we should be making this decision? Or information, any presentations you guys are looking for? I could bring people on both sides of this issue in front of you if you want, the, so you can ask questions?
Well, my, I still haven't seen the, the whole law. And that would be good to see, and also to hear from our town attorney, you know, what our options are and what the law actually says and doesn't say. There's a lot of assumption out there. So, and I know some municipalities have moved forward, so I'm, I'm a little concerned because I haven't seen the law in particular. I, I would personally welcome a work session or another session to, you know, discuss what our options are as laid out, Supervisor.
Would you like me to have a Zoom work session where we, where I invite somebody who's an expert on this issue, both for and against?
I think that's worthwhile, something like that would be worth, I, I listened to a New York State, two, two New York State Bar Association presentations in the last week on this. But primarily, almost exclusively, the, the presentation was on the criminal law aspects of it. The, the, the most recent one was actually supposed to, one of the topics was the issue of the opt-out. But actually, after the three-hour presentation, they never even addressed it. The opt-out provision of the law, Councilman Boobie, it was very small. It's a very, it's about 100, the whole law is about 120 pages and the opt-out provision is a couple of paragraphs within the law. So it's really just a, very, very little that we know. It was very little that there is to be reviewed on the issue of the opt-out. But I think it'd be a very good idea just to get the sense of, and I can also, you know, talk with the other town attorneys, I mean, I, I talk with them quite frequently. The other town attorneys on the East End, as well as the Brookhaven Town Attorney's, I saw, Avalon Hunting. See what they, what they're doing, because I think it makes a certain amount of sense if it's a town surrounding you or, or doing one thing, it might make sense to do that, but if.
Hi Jim, the opt-out law, it cites Section 24 of New York State Municipal Home Rule Law, which, which governs these kinds of elections. And I think it's spelled out pretty clearly in that section of code, New York State, what we can do.
Right, right.
Jim, I mean in terms of if there is a permissive referendum and it's a, it's a yes, we need to have laws in it, you know, in anticipation of that, how that's regulated locally.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Guidance in that respect, I, I know what other municipalities are doing. You know, treating it like alcohol or cigarettes and, you know, restricted to certain areas and things like that. But we have no code at all that covers this.
And, you know, all the towns don't at this point, really.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You're right, right, and the state law, really, I think there are going to be restrictions, I think. Yeah, I think you can say at the very minimum, the restrictions would be, like you mentioned, very similar to restrictions for, for cigarette smoking and for alcohol intake, you know, the next, you know, if you're not going to, if you're not allowed to smoke in a public places, you're not going to allow to smoke marijuana in public places. You're not allowed to have an open container in a town park, you're not going to be able to smoke marijuana in a town park. I mean, I think those are the types of things that will, will, will follow along. But, but yeah, you're right too, we need to, we need to cod, probably need to codify some of this ourselves. And, and then from a zoning point of view. And then from a zoning point of view, you know, you want to treat this like any other type of retail shop or you want to do something else different? Those are definitely worthwhile discussions.
You cannot opt out of the legalization. It's legal. So you can opt out of places that'll be available for sale.
Right.
And these bar type of lounges, but you can't opt out of the fact that it is now legal.
Yeah, sure. That's state-controlled, obviously.
So we're going to have to have that code in place no matter what happens.
Well, not if you opt out, then if it's not
Public parks and that kind of.
Yeah, well, that'll be, that'll be covered also in the state law term. I think the you you know, I'll have to look further into that, but I believe that'll be covered in enforcement with the state law.
Right.
It's going to be left up to the town to enforce that. I mean, there'll be, the regulations will follow, basically, like I mentioned. I think the idea from the state level is that, you know, because if something you can't, you can't smoke, segregation, you can't smoke marijuana. And it'll mirror pretty much the alcohol restrictions as well, you know, but.
So what happens if we have a public referendum and I'm all for the referendum, I, you know, I, you know, I, I think it's, the democratic process should be in place here. I think people should decide. If the referendum is a yes or a no, we have, what are the options if it's a no? Because it still is legal as far as sales go, correct? And dispensaries and things like that.
So what no means yes, right? So if the public votes down opting out, we have to create the code still in terms of where it will be allowed for sale.
Yeah, and if they vote yes to opt out, then we have another issue because it's still legal as far as sales go, correct?
Well, you know, you wouldn't be able to sell it in the town, but you
That's the whole idea, right.
Let's say you bought it somewhere else, you'd be able to use it here. We can still restrict, you know, we can limit it to places where cigarettes and alcohol are allowed. Or we are, though, at 11 o'clock, so I do, that successfully did use up a good eight minutes, so.
Well, this is an important issue. We should discuss this and, you know.
We should. I like the idea of having a, you know, a work session where we have some experts. So, because there's a lot to this.
There is.
There's a lot to it. And there's some people who are very articulate on both sides of this issue, so I will work with my office and we'll try to set up, you know, at least a one-hour work session.
There's a, there's a timing also, right, relative to the public referendum. I mean, in order to get that on the ballot, right, Jim, we have
Yeah, I believe we have a little time yet, but yes, we have something to be in place, I think, by the latest August.
The state hasn't put together their rules either in terms of their licensing, so it's unlikely, no matter what, that even if we consented to the sale here, you won't see it for probably a year and a half, except for the reservation, because they get to put together their own their own rules related to the sale. All right, let's move on, though. So back to our agenda. I think the next item is the Pierce Concert House. Give me a second.
That's correct.
All right. One second here. Too many open windows. Somebody have the work session?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
From Southampton Village on Pierce Concert House.
Okay, and in terms of presenting, who are the
The mayor and members of the Pierce Concert Action Committee.
All right, so Charlie, can we let them in?
I'm letting them in now. They are in. Start your engines, please.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us. Let me see who we have here. We have
We also have other team members with us, Chick Boyhee.
Okay.
All right, you want to bring him in?
Yeah.
Yes. Bob Nelson, Rob Nelson.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chris, who else is with us?
Just make sure you add Chick.
He's in.
Yes.
As well. You added Chris.
Sarah.
Charles Boyhee.
Yeah, Sarah Dowd.
Need to get Mike Ciara.
Mike, okay.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hey, Chick.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. Are we waiting for anyone else?
Sarah Dowd.
Nicole Christian. Nicole Christian should be joining, if she's not here yet. Nicole Christian?
Not here yet.
Okay.
Let's see, Mike's Ciara. Is he part of the presentation too?
Yes, he is.
And what about Sarah Dowd?
That I don't know.
Yes, yes, sometimes that's her name. Not that she has a good personality, but you know, when you have all of these zooms, depending on what zoom you send.
So, so this is about the property that the town acquired, the Pierce Concert just across from Lake Agawam Pond Lane. And CPF acquired the land and we've been talking about rebuilding the home. And I guess it's the African-American Museum, Southampton African American Museum, that is looking to create a complex here to not only honor this very important freed slave and philanthropist, also to sort of tell the story of this period in the lens of in the role that they played in the early development of the town throughout the town since then. So I guess I'll turn it over. Am I turning it over to you, Jesse? Am I warned? You want to spot off?
Sure, if it's okay. I'll make a quick introduction. I don't know if you want to wait another minute or so. Oh, there's Nicole. Okay, she's on. All right, so I'll make a quick introduction and then I'll kind of pass this off to our leaders of the Pierce Concert Action Committee. But first, I just wanted to say thank you to the entire town board for your guidance and help throughout this entire process, including the acquisition of the land. So thank you to councilperson Bouvier, councilperson Scavoni, Lofsked and Martel, as well as Supervisor Schneiderman, and also just wanted to thank Dr. Georgia Greer Key and Brenda Simmons and our grant runner Nicole Christian for your hard work, as well as Lisa Combrink, who has been assisting Nicole throughout the process in the CPF. So we just wanted to thank you again for your guidance and your help, and we definitely couldn't have done it without the help of this entire town board. And last month, we met to get some guidance and to provide the board an update. And with that guidance, since then, we have come back. We have worked nonstop with Chick and Chris Voorhees and engineering, engineering firm with Bob Nelson to come up with the site plan, you know, per guidance. And so we're looking forward to presenting the site plan as well as other updates for your review. And so with that said, I'll turn this over to Dr. Key.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to to try to share my screen if I can. You know, that's always the problem, trying to share your screen.
While you figure that one out, you might need some assistance from, well, certain to be able to do that, but I just also want to mention that our CPF Program Manager, Lisa Combrink, has recused herself from the conversation. She's a, you know, we will be working on the CPF piece ourself on this and with other members of CPF, but the Program Director had a conflict and had to recuse herself.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank everybody for having us and I was on at 10:00. And it was a breath of fresh air. So that just tells you it's been difficult. It's been a long time coming. And this project has been very difficult, as you know. And it's been a lot of sleepless nights. Last night was one. So I'm just very grateful to be on here with you, good people. And just when you think you're, you know, you got away, they just pull you back in. So it was a breath of fresh air. So thank you for calming me down with your meeting. So it was very great to be here today and thank you for this time. So this is the structure of the Pierce Concert structure that was originally there before it was demolished. 51 Pond Lane, as it looked. I do have pictures. We used to drive by every single day as a piece of it came down with our hearts. So this was the original structure that dated back. So this is Pierce Concert. He was born on March 17, 1814. And his mother was Violet Williams and she was enslaved to Nathaniel Cooper. And his father was Chadrak Konzer. And she, since she was enslaved, you know, the law states that if you were, your fewer enslaved to someone, your child would be born and indentured to that person. And that was the statue and station of Pierce Konzer's life, because he was born after July 4th, 1799. So he was enslaved, indentured because of his mother's station in life. Here you would see, this is the Japanese print of the ship that he was on, the Manhattan, which was the voyage that would eventually open up trade back to Japan after the embargo. So that you would see, this is how we were able to get back into Japan. So his life is very important. You do see that his life, his parents' life, his grandparents, Gad and Esther were also very important. And the land that he actually also has was equally important because it was inherited, the land at 51 Pond Lane. So we believe that his record in his life is so important to Southampton Village and the world alike. We see manumission documents that show that Nathaniel Cooper recorded conditional manumissions of Pierce. His maternal grandparents, Gad and Esther Williams, that date back to August 15th of 1803, that their freedom was also contingent upon Gad's voyage to the sea. So they were seamen as well. And they went on a voyage, his grandfather went on a voyage with Captain William Fowler. And as seamen, they were paid wages also that were afforded to Gad and his service. So he has a long history with Southampton and also his grandfather as a whaler. And then we know that Pierce Konzer also went on to be a whaler. So we see this long history with Pierce Konzer in the water. So we, as the Pierce Concert Action Committee, got wind that his house was actually being demolished to make way for some other structure. And we had to actually come to the village and the community to say, this house is of significance because of this cultural ambassador who was celebrated by the village and his prominence. And of course, the street, of course, the street there, you would see that there was a marker there. So we galvanized the community, the greater community, and we came together to do that. So this is the marker. And this is the community coming together. And that's what we did. So this is the marker. This is the day that we celebrated. We had the National Trust for Historic Places, being this place matters. This is, again, this is all of us together with Tom Edmonds, me, Brenda, and also we have Joseph McGill, who is of the slave dwelling project. And he came out and he did a talk for us. And this is the street rededication that we were all there for that day. And here is all of the people that were there. And you will notice right here, very special person. So all of our community was here to see this day and to commemorate it. We have a big video that we are working on. We have multiple videos that we're making into a documentary on Wednesday that we hope to feature at the Hamptons Film Festival. And to Brenda, I know she doesn't want to cry, but this is a very special person in our community that we hope to feature in in the video, which recently we just found out that passed away, who recorded us in the Long Island Museum in Stony Brook. So this was one of the days that we celebrated and was a part of the dedication. Here you will see that this property is designated. It should have never come down. It is a contributing property in the the, the village historic property is designated not just locally, but on the state and nationally. So this is the Chris system, which shows that it's designated. And for some reason, that was overlooked. So now, recently, we just designated locally, but it was as individually. But it was contributing to the overall district and locally, we just designated it. So this is the importance here on the table. We actually had archaeology and we found very significant items and artifacts that date back to Pierce Konzer's time and even prehistoric, before Pierce Konzer's time. Here, when the house was torn down, we was able to negotiate to take down the original membranes. And this is some of the timbers that were hand-hewn timbers that we were able to salvage. We were able to go up and re-erect the actual structure in a factory to show that what we needed to do, how we needed to fix it. And all of these tags here are the numbers, because the actual timbers were Roman numeral and we can put it back together like a puzzle or as if it was painting by numbers. So that was very exciting. And I actually posted something like this on Instagram and people went crazy for it. So it's very exciting. Here, I will ask my colleagues to come up. I don't know if Chick or someone would like to now take over to talk about this part of the project.
Members of the board.
Yes, Bob Nelson is going to be speaking on the site plan, but I just wanted to say hello and good morning. And thank you all for your attention. Bob, take it.
Thank you. Members of the board, I'm Bob Nelson Jr. I'm a senior partner at NNP Engineering, Architecture and Surveying, commonly referred to as Nelson and Pope. I'm a professional civil engineer and been providing site and infrastructure planning and design to municipalities, institutional and private sectors for over 45 years. The committee has been actively pursuing the visioning of the one point, of the 0.8 acre historically designated parcel on Pond Lane for over five years. Recently, Nelson and Pope assisted the committee in creating a site plan that you see before you today, representing that visioning. The proposed plan includes the reconstruction of the homestead at its original location on the property, the retention of an existing cottage, and the construction of a 4,410 square foot visitor center. The plan provides for a drop-off area on Pond Lane, along with the proposed crosswalk connecting the site to Lake Agawam Park. An ADA accessible walkway has been provided from Pond Lane to the homestead, the cottage, and the visitor center, and to the various site amenities, which include tranquility ponds interconnected with a small stream, a visitor's kiosk, seating areas along the walkway, and an outdoor seating area. Parking, as you can see, has been provided in the rear of the parcel. There is an existing right-of-way on the south side of the property that provides driveway access to a residential lot immediately adjacent to the rear of the property. The existing driveway is 16 feet in width. Proposal is to reconstruct and widen the driveway to serve both the adjacent property and the residence, the subject property, excuse me, and the residence, improving access and providing New York State Fire Code compliant access for emergency vehicles and fire apparatus. A Suffolk County Department of Health Service compliant AIA system sanitary will be provided along with stormwater management system, meeting the New York State EEC and Village Stormwater requirements. A landscape plan will be prepared by ARIUS Design. If you have any specific questions, I can certainly answer them to the board.
Okay, and I have more. So this is just overall how we originally designed the property. the property to look. This is the original house. And then we have these other designs.
Yes, this is the architectural. Mike Sierra can walk you through the architecturals.
Yes.
Before we move on, Doctor.
Yeah, can you, Georgette, can you go backwards? Because there's an additional building shown on that subplan that wasn't shown on the rendering.
Yes, it's there.
No.
The middle building.
Yeah. The original rendering, the original rendering didn't show the cottage. The cottage is now included on the site plan.
Oh, yes. Well, one of the things, the challenge that you had given us, the original cottage was we never, we talked about the significance of the original cottage. The cottage is there. I don't know why it wasn't on the original plan, but we have no intentions of taking that down because it is significant. It was listed on the original. It was listed on the original Chris system. When we spoke to the state, it was listed and it should be significant. And one of the things that we talked about is that that will be used for our auxiliary building. And not only will it be used for the auxiliary building, we were thinking about your proposal and challenge to us to think about the concession stand. Not only will we be using it for auxiliary and concession stand. When you think about the whole project, when I think Bob said that the project is like four thousand, a little more over, close to five thousand square feet. That's not any bigger than someone's home. You know, I know people who have five thousand or seven thousand square feet of home. And I'm like, no way, because who's going to clean it? I don't want a house that big. But when you think about that size of a building, you think about some of the programs people have, it could be a few people a night. So we're thinking about sustainability of the project and how it will be used and how the community will use it. So we're thinking that that building will be the auxiliary flex building and it could be used for the concession stand. And it's a significant building, so we do not want to take it down. We do not want to move it because, again, it could endanger that actual structure.
Okay, thank you, Georgette.
And then the other thing is too, one other thing supervisor. In terms of the other part that we're looking at too, is when you think about the landmark status, the land itself can be, the land itself can be landmark. But the fact that this original structure is still there, that's the other significance in landmarking. You know what they say is a fifty-year lookback? The fact that this structure was there in nineteen forty-five, that also adds to the significance of the location. The fact that this structure predates the fifty-year lookback. So we need that structure to remain there.
So that's the white building that you showed us on an earlier slide with the boarded up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's the building right there.
That one. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So let's continue. Oh, Councilman Schivoni, you might have had the same question I did, yeah?
I did. I noted that that was not on the presentation.
Well, this is what you see here. This here was an early conceptual. This is the other challenge that you gave us. This was more of a conceptual rendering. What we have done and we worked feverishly to take something that was conceptual, a theory basically, and we've actually built it out from conceptual theory to actual all levels, a complete, a complete actual design that has from the elevations, not only from the elevations and the architect will show you, to actually looking at furniture, placement of of everything. So it's no longer a conceptual plan where it's more of build-outs, elevations, and just as Bob said, to even being up to code. You know, Bob has put his signature on this. You know, so everything that is done, so it's not just a conceptual plan anymore. It's an actual site plan that is done to its complete and fullness. And, and you know, everything has been thought out. So that's what we have done. Even figuring out soups and nuts. So that's what, you know, that's what the difference is. But I really wanted to keep showing this plan because it really shows, you know, how it would look. So we're still looking at the project in its totality. And this is why you see more of a complete plan here. So that's the difference. This was what we were working on conceptually. And now we have a fuller, a fuller plan and to what it really will look like and how everything will work together. You know, so there were substantial changes, but substantial changes that really make the plan work. But I'm not the architect. I mean, I talk with them a lot. We're on the phone a lot. So Mike can talk to some of his plans and maybe give you a fuller idea.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Good morning, Supervisor Schneiderman, members of the board. As Georgette introduced me, I'm Michael Shara. I'm senior partner also at Nelson and Pope. I head the architecture department here at the firm. I'm also a New York State Registered Architect. I'm also a lead accredited professional. Been providing architectural design and planning to both public and private sectors over the last twenty years. A large portion of our portfolio is providing design for institutional facilities such as the project being proposed here today as well as historic preservation and restoration. And so I just wanted to take a little bit of time to just briefly describe the proposed architecture and the building improvements. As my partner Bob had mentioned, the proposed plan includes the reconstruction of the Konzer Homestead. And we are going to look to seek to restore the original historical character of the home as well as retaining the existing cottage. The images, maybe Georgette, if you could go to the floor plans of the visitor's center for a minute. There you go. So to honor the legacy of Piers Konzer, the proposal includes this construction of a forty-four hundred square foot visitor's center. It's going to allow one to explore the rich history of Mr. Konzer and his impact on the community. The architecture was developed with the, with the action committee over several work sessions. And the proposed visitor's center, as you see here, somewhat modest. It's a one-story non-combustible structure that will comprise of a divisible multipurpose room which can accommodate larger gatherings as well as some exhibit space and an administration area that will provide some ancillary support space to the facility. There is a partial basement, which you can see there on your screen to the left, which will be used for storage and the building's mechanical spaces and utilities. Georgette, if you want to go to the elevation views for a minute.
Okay. Is that it?
The colored, the color drawings. There you go, of the outside. There we go. Thank you. So as shown here in these facade elevation drawings, the exterior design is somewhat minimal in nature. It is a one-story building. The predominant material that's being proposed is brick veneer over the exhibition and main area of the visitor's center. To take advantage of the building orientation and some sustainable design practices, you can see that we're proposing a sawtooth roof design, which is over the main portion of the visitor's center. This is going to allow for daylighting the interior spaces, but also for the installation of a solar array, which can provide greater energy efficiency and sustainability to the building. You can see that in the west elevation. So the west elevation that you have, which is at the top of the page, is, is facing the parking area that you can see depicted on the site plan. This has an accessible entrance. Actually, all entrances have been designed with handicap accessibility in mind. The administration wing, which you see there is depicted, is treated a little differently with a gable roof design, bringing the scale of the building into the correct proportions. The south elevation, which is on the bottom of the page, is also looking at the side view of the administration with the visitor's center in the background. Georgette, if you want to go to the next page. This is a sectional view of the building, just overall heights of the building. You can see it's a very modest in height. The overall building height itself is between thirteen, thirteen feet for the main structure to the highest point, which is that skylight. You're less than twenty-two feet. So it's actually less than what would be maximum permitted for a residential home. So you can see it's somewhat, the scale of it is somewhat diminished. And the next, I think the next page, Georgette. Another elevation view. No?
I don't think I have anymore. I think, let me see. I think I do have the actual. Let me see.
That's fine. I think you have it.
I do have. Yeah, but I had it on this one.
You did.
No.
I think that covers it.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, this pretty much concludes the description of the proposed architecture. Of course, if you have any specific questions relating to the architecture, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Yeah. And then I think I do have, of course, I have extensive files, but I just think we were overall given basically what, you know, the overall design is, but I can pull up any extensive plans that we do have. I have the whole, all the files here. So let me see, whatever you want me to pull up, I can pull it up. What did you want me to pull up?
No, Georgette, I think, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. And so then the other thing is too, you know, like if you, we have also Nicole with us who's working on the grants. So Nicole, would you want me to pull up your, pull up your, your budget for you now?
That's fine. I don't think I have too much to add. I think the team did a great job. Supervisor Schneiderman did ask about a fund plan. I don't know how much detail you want, but the budget hasn't changed very much. There has been some, some nominal increase in material costs due to the pandemic and delivery charges. We just confirmed that with some of our vendors yesterday. That will have to be added and adjusted as we move through this process. But I don't have much to change. We are working on a septic system application for water quality. We're going to work on that. That's due May fifteenth. And I've been directed to work with some folks in the county on that, in the town on that application. So, I mean, yeah, so that I'm okay, that we're fine with. I don't have much more to add. We do have a fund development strategy. I don't know if the board is interested in that, but we have completed a fund strategy to kick off this year.
All right. So in terms of what you're looking for the town board for, you're looking for the funds to reconstruct that house, which you think are around a million dollars.
That is correct.
Something. And then you're looking for permission from the board to do the other. We already have an agreement with the village. And that agreement with the village will allow for will allow, allows for the management of the property by Southampton Village. So we would need to authorize these additional structures being erected on this property and also the management of the structures by Southampton African American Museum. I think that is the entity that's looking to be the the management entity. So, but in terms of, in terms of town dollars, I imagine you're probably also looking for money for the IA system as well, right?
That is correct. That's the application. That's due May fifteenth. Yes, supervisor.
Okay, is there, and so that's, did I, I get that correct in terms of what you're asking the town for? Those, those items, the money to rebuild the house, money for the IA system, an agreement to allow the additional buildings, the site plan basically, and an agreement to allow the managing entity, Southampton African American Museum. And how long of a, a contract are you looking for? And I don't remember the IMA with the village, how long that is.
Well, given, given the fact that we're looking for monies from Gartner Foundation, they usually expect to have at least a fifteen-year as a minimum amount of a contract. They do not want to put money into a project that is not a long term. So they have a longer, they generally have a longer requirement. And we can call Kathy and others to look at their requirements because they do not want to invest into something that's going to turn over and not be invested into the nonprofit organization that's managing the property.
Dr. Key, I did take a look just now based on Supervisor Schneiderman's comment. I just opened it up in the file. The original app, the original agreement I had says twenty years.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't longer term. I knew it was a longer, a longer term for the Gartner Foundation. But Brenda, unmute yourself.
Yes, I was just trying to bring up also the IMA. And I was just trying to look through it real quick, but I believe Nicole, you have answered the question. It definitely was definitely longer than.
Well, the IMA, Jesse, do you know, does the IMA have a term on it?
I don't see.
That's what I just pulled up. It's the, between the town and the village, it's twenty years. Mayor Jesse provided this to me in a package when they brought me on because I needed it in order to put the applications together. It's twenty years, dated two thousand nine, signed two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine. So we're in the eleventh year. So there's nine years left.
Well, well, supervisor, I would, I would, I would also ask, I mean, we, I, I hope that we could adjust this because we're, you know.
That's why I'm bringing it up because.
Because we're not in the building, you know, we've been working, we're not in the building. So I, I would say, I will hope we could adjust it once we actually get going.
It's going to be hard for you guys to raise two million plus in private funds unless there's a sense that you're going to be there for an extended period of time. So.
Yes.
So we just have to figure out what that term is. Since there's nine years left on the agreement with the village, we probably want to amend the agreement with the village to extend the, the management and also to allow for the construction of these buildings and the management, the assignment of the management to the not-for-profit for an additional twenty years from the date that we penned that agreement.
Yes, exactly.
There's another agreement that's, an IMA that's connected with, to the zoning board application, which commences on June of twenty sixteen. I don't see an end date. I don't think I have the entire.
That's what I was trying to implement that I have in front of me. My latest one was two thousand sixteen. And just to, just to say, that has been sort of a lingering challenge over the last three administrations of really confirming and getting all of that down regarding the IMA and the agreement between the Southampton African American Museum. So I believe that that is in the process of being totally resolved according to ourselves and Mayor Jesse.
Now, you know, I understand that not everybody is thrilled about this. There's some, some people, I guess, who I don't even know what aspects they're not happy with. Is there concern about noise or life pollution or traffic or? I don't, I, I haven't heard, but then I'm hearing that there might be some opposition brewing. Have you?
Well, supervisor, can I just answer that? I've just, that's why I said, when you think you're pulled out, they pull you back in. That's what I was referencing. One of the things that I love about government and democracy, this is, this is why we have systems put in place and why we have public hearings. You know for one that Brenda and I aren't afraid of a fight. This is how we were able to save this property. And that's why we have public public processes in place. And for us to move forward, we have to go through the whole public process. And that's what we're willing to do. Just because you have a loud bark doesn't mean that you have to say. From what I understand, there is one person that has tried to rally a few people and it's not right. And I will say this. What are we talking about with noise pollution? We have our traffic study guy on. I don't know if he's still here. He can unmike. We've done a traffic study. I didn't want to go into too much detail with how much of a level of a study that we've done. You mean to tell me we have the park across the street and there's fifteen hundred people there. You all know very well that we have concerts in the park. We have right directly next door, the Southampton Museum. We have all of these institutions directly in the vicinity. So just because it is the Piers Konzer Association. So just because it is the Piers Concert Association with a certain level of, we know what, it's going to be noise and a problem.
So can I?
I don't think so.
Can I just?
So we can have, we can, uh, have our traffic study guy talk about what we've done, and we've done the work. It's not fair, and I think that we should allow the public process to go through and see how many people, because Brenda will tell you, she's worked in a village. Somebody will come in and say, the whole community, and then we'll have, and say, let's see if the whole community is against it or not, because I'm ready to organize, to knock on doors and get signatures if I have to, just like we did before. And just like we saved the property, that's what we're ready to do. We're not scared of a fight and we'll roll up our sleeves.
And I ask, like, to simply, one more thing, just to clarify. Person that has presented this opposition is the person who has just purchased a home that the Hermes originally was, and was the original couple who opposed this whole thing from the very beginning and started this whole thing. So I'm just saying, and also it has been lingering, I want to be very clear to everyone that even when we, when we first started this project, there was opposition from so many different areas that we continue to go forth with this. And, um, when the presentation was done, I don't want to get too much deep in this, but when the, the overall presentation was done, it seemed to have been an issue. They just probably would, had preferred just to have the, the original building done. And I think the opposition came when we wanted to do the whole prod, uh, project, which I think is definitely an honor to this, this extraordinary man. So that's all I'll say about that.
Well, can I, I wanted to ask a question about process, and I guess this goes to Jim. So this is in the village. So in terms of SECPRA, I guess it would be, is it the village planning board that would be the lead agency on this?
Most likely, if the planning, if it's going to reach the planning board, yes. I, I know that they are making an application to the zoning board. Uh, and that's, uh, an application has already been submitted, I believe. So, yeah, so it'll stay within the village, whether it's the zoning board or planning board, I guess. Site plan approval from the planning board as well.
Any environmental issues, including traffic, that all will go to the village?
Right, and as, I think, as Dr. Key mentioned, they'll have, they'll, there'll be a public, there'll be public hearings at the zoning board, probably a public hearings at planning board, so this, you know, the process will, process will go through and.
Supervisor, I will, I can assure you, and my team is here. We've done everything to minimize any variance. Chick can speak to that. We have a whole chart. Anything I could do to get rid of any necessary or need for variance, we got rid of it. That's why you will see that we cut anything that would need a variance, cut it. Anything that will cause any harm or any special, I got rid of everything to make this as streamlined as possible. The problem is, the problem is, we live in a society where certain people, listen, we have done everything possible to do the best thing. And we're not going to allow anyone to throw us into a political fight. We're not political. This is for the betterment of the community. This is a deserving project, and we all just need to get along and appreciate everybody's contributions to this country, and that's it. We don't want to be involved in anybody's political process or problem. We want to live together in harmony, and that's what this project is, a site of consciousness and togetherness. And so we believe in the right of the majority to govern, and that's why we believe in the political process. And we are working very hard, and let's not forget that this project is a project of two municipalities and not of me and Brenda's. And we are volunteers and have volunteered thousands of odd hours pro bono. And so we reject anyone who is trying to make this a political pawn. And these gentlemen, Chicken Boyhees and, and, and Rob and all of these guys have jumped onto this project to try to salvage it and worked very hard. And you, supervisor, and all of the town, everyone has worked very hard to push this project forward. We have done the right thing, and unfortunately, we cannot allow a few sour grapes to sour with this project because it is too great. And so with that, real dear time.
No, I certainly appreciate all that you've done, and you guys have been very passionate about this. And because of your efforts, the town acquired this property. Because of your efforts, the house, although it was disassembled, was preserved and protected. So, um, you know, I, I think it's important to understand that there may be some opposition and they may hire lawyers and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we are doing everything by the book, so we're not opening up any issues. And that's really why I was asking these questions about process. So the town may or may not have to amend the CPF program with the management plan for this property. I'm sure it was acquired for historic preservation, so maybe we don't have to touch that. Would, there's, we're certainly going to have to do a resolution to amend the IMA with the village. We're certainly going to have to do a town board, not a village, a town board, um, resolution accepting the, uh, you know, the, the development plan for this property, the additional buildings, the architect, all of that, you know, according to the, the plans developed by, you know, Nelson Pope and Voorhees or Aris Designs. We're going to have to adopt all those things so that you have the permission from our end. Um, and then the village, they're going to have their own process. So it's really, it's going to be important to do it all by the book, to make sure we have the public hearings, that, you know, we, we properly convene them, we properly close them, that all the SECPRA, the State Environmental Quality Review Act is followed. And, you know, and I, I, I love this, like, it's a great idea. I'm, I'm on your.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right, and that's, that's one of the things how we've gotten so far. We've all, always followed the book, and that's why I'm glad you mentioned it. Because, um, like I said, we have Chick here, he can talk about how we handle the, the variances. And like I said, the traffic guys here, so everything you're saying, we, 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 we are following by the book. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that.
And, and whatever, you know, I haven't heard any arguments against it, but, you know, if they're similar to what I anticipate, it's probably, you know, concern about the outdoor seating area or things like that. And sometimes.
We cut it down to thirty people.
Sure, so let, let me just finish my thought. So sometimes, you know, if there's one or two minor concerns, things can be modified or mitigated. So may, if, if it's a screening issue, trees can be planted, whatever, you know. Sound walls, whatever it is, there might be some things that can be done to address community concerns if there are such, but I haven't, I haven't heard them, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm certainly will, will listen to what people have to say. But I think that on the whole, I think you're going to enjoy broad community support for this. At least I, I, I hope so. And I think it's a really important project because I think, and I, you know, I said this last time, you know, we live in one of the wealthiest places in the world, you know, and Southampton Village, you know, the, the wealth in this community, you know, it, it can be, it can be staggering. You know, billionaires, you know, and a lot of the, you know, a lot of it is older money, money that was accumulated through generations. And I'm sure you'll find that some of that older money traces its roots back to exploitation of slavery. And, uh, I, I think it's important to tell this story. You know, wealth did concentrate in America through, over time. It did, uh, to, uh, and there's a tremendous disparity today between rich and poor. And we can't forget about some of the people who helped grow our economy and didn't necessarily prosper in the same way. And, uh, I think that, um, Piers is a, you know, I think a really important person because he represents something much bigger than himself. You know, he was a philanthropist, he was a, you know, a merchant, he was a, um, a mariner. He was so much that ties into our community and what our community is today in terms of a, you know, multicultural diverse, you know, a multicultural diverse economic area. And I don't want, you know, we, we talk about our history so much, and it's often focused on colonial history. And we leave out these players, these really important, you know, contributors to how we got to where we are today. So I think it's a really, you know, important story to tell. And, yeah, again, it's much bigger than just Piers. But, you know, by honoring him and telling his story, I think we can also provide a context and tell a much larger story about America and about our own local history. So I, I think it's really important for all those reasons.
Well, thank you, supervisor. You always speak truth to power. I just hope you don't get a backlash for it.
I will, I will get some backlash, you know. I'll get some backlash. You got to stand up for what you think is, you know, the right thing to do.
Yeah, and I'll echo that. This is the right. This is absolutely the right thing to do. This is our history. Um, I did, I wanted to switch topics quickly. If Chick was around, I just wanted to understand something on the IA systems so that we, you know, we, uh, were a bit of a victim of our success with, uh, our rebate programs and other things. I just want to understand the scheduling against the type of, uh, system you're, you're proposing to put in here. I don't believe it's an IA system. I think it's a small package system. Is that correct? Is that in Article Six?
Hi, John. Great to see you. I heard my name mentioned a few times, so, uh, just as far as this is concerned, Bob Nelson, uh, the engineer is very familiar with it. I'll just say that, uh, we designed this for approximately six hundred gallons per day. So it's a low flow. There was a house on the property previously, as well as a cottage, a pool, and a garage. And the cottage and the visitor center will all be tied into a new sanitary system. It will be an innovative alternative onsite wastewater system, so it's an IA.
Are you clustering them? So you, you, you want to take advantage of the rebate as opposed to putting in an application with CPF for a, an infrastructure project? Is that what I'm understanding? I'm just trying to, trying to get that in my head correctly.
Yeah, I'll defer to Nicole on the finance part or the, the funding part. But if there are any questions on design, Bob or I can answer them.
So, um, Councilman Bovare, yes, so the, um, it, May fifteenth deadline is for the IA system for a water quality grant that would help, uh, cover the cost of the septic system. That is separate and distinct from the CPF infrastructure grant asked that I'm preparing for June.
Okay, all right, great. So you're going to, you want to take advantage of the county program as well as our rebate program for a IA series, correct? And then, and then you're, you're going to put in another proposal for something else that's, that's independent of that? That, what, is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Great, yeah.
This, uh, zoning board request. You said there's no variances? Is that for a change of zone?
No, I, no, I said we tried to minimize it. Um, Chick can speak to that. So we had, um, a few things that we, we actually updated. Chick, you want to speak to the variances? Um, you want to put up the chart or, and speak about that or what?
Yeah, it depends. It depends on how much detail the supervisor wants to get into.
Well, I just, I really, um.
What variances?
I, I, I mean, I'm curious as to what variances, but the zoning on this property is, is it a residentially zoned property or is it a downtown commercially zoned property?
The property is zoned R twenty, and within an R twenty zone, a museum requires a special exception. So that is a determination, uh, under the code by the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, based on the design, as Georgette said, we've looked to minimize variances. Uh, but there is a, a variance for parking. Uh, there's a fairly de minimis two-foot variance for the total side yards. Uh, and the village has a transition zone, uh, to the rear of the property. There's a variance for that, for the small parking area that we are providing on site. And the road width is being decreased, which I think we, we all would agree is a good idea. But, uh, there is a variance needed for that. So it's a combination of a few things that have all been, uh, reviewed with the building department. We expect, uh, to be going to the zoning board in May and are, um, you know, refining the application, uh, for that purpose. But, um, there were much larger variances previously, and we've refined the plan to, you know, look to do exactly what you said, Jay. Provide areas for landscaping, proper screening and buffering, uh, and ensure the variances were the minimum possible.
Right, thank you, Chick.
Okay. I have a question about the construction.
Tommy, John, go ahead.
Thank you. The Piers Concert House down in, in the front. Um, when, when I reviewed the parts of the structure that were, were still left, because when it was taken down, it was left on the ground for an extended period of time, unfortunately and regretfully. Um, and then it was, uh, taken up off the ground. So some of the, some of the, uh, preserved, uh, timbers are, uh, either damaged or. So there's going to be, we're going to have to augment, um, the, the structure in order to, to hold the thing up. Are the original timbers going to be exposed inside the structure? Or are they going to be incorporated into the building itself?
Some of them will be exposed so that you will, you know, if anyone like a architect who à la carte would want to see that, so some of them will be exposed. Bob, you want to speak to that? Is, I saw you perking up.
Oh, no, no, uh, I was, uh, listening to what you were saying.
Yeah, so we, we wanted to leave some of them just to show the early technology and mechanics of how things were done. So we wanted to leave some of that exposed because we think it's very, um, interesting. And, and, um, originally, when the house was taken down, you know, the purview of the ARB is from the outside of the house. And so originally, that's what was the designation. Oh, you know, it was signed off that it was no significance. And after a long fight, we were able to go inside, they allowed us to go in. And that was the discovery to say, wait a minute, it is historic. And so that was part of us finding, the find to actually say it did date back to the correct period. So we think it's really important for us to show that these timbers are basically what saved the struc, uh, the structure and solidified the significance of this house and that it was Piers Concert's house. So we think it's, you know, almost sacred to show these actual timbers and the Roman numerals.
Okay, right, and the mortise intended style of joinery is, uh, it's impressive. It lasts, you know, that's, did the test of time. What kind of contingency is going to be put into the, the construction of, of this building? I know, you know, when there's historic reconstruction, things come up. Is there a percentage on this or?
That's, that's, I can't speak to that, but that's the.
That may be right.
Nicole, maybe on budgeting.
Yep, we're, we are, uh, actually, I have to jump off at twelve o'clock, so I'll make it very, uh, short and smooth. I do have the detailed budget broke down, um, Count, uh, Councilman Chiavo for the entire project and for the house. The budget, as I shared with you earlier, I don't want to get into too much detail, but there is a percentage increase in marketing costs due to the pandemic and delivery costs, even gas charges, along with a contingency fee that has, um, also been included. It's around eleven point twenty-five percent. That's what, that's what we were going over yesterday in great detail. I will make sure that that's included in the final budget as we move forward. My deadline is, is mid-May, um, really to get the budget solid for us to include in the three applications that we have lined up.
Okay, I also wanted to, I, I also wanted to add, um, Councilman Scavoni. The one, the other thing is to, you know, this is the importance of the whole sustainability of project. We are also thinking about, um, wear and tear on, because of the sensitivity of the structure too. So that is also, uh, in regards to, um, the plan with showing the actual timbers. I know there was also a plan to have kind of a plexiglass in the floor as well to show some of the timber. So I'm sure you'd be delighted to see some of the plans that we have for the inside of, of, of the building as well.
I would, thank you. And, uh, I, I know contingencies are, it's nice to have a pretty healthy one from the outset with historic structures and, and their rebuilding, because like I said, things come up. All right.
I think it's going to come up as, as time goes along, like Nicole said, because we were surprised to see that all of this stuff went up so quickly, you know, um, so I'm hoping, you know, we'll see.
Can I ask a question?
That's been a problem since the beginning, you know, with, you know, that's been a problem since the beginning, you know, the fluctuation of prices and materials, so.
Can I ask a question beyond, you know, assuming that you're able, you know, CPF is able to rebuild the building and you're able to raise the money and build the building for the, uh, the center, the museum center. Have you developed? have you developed, have you figured out what your op- yearly operational costs are gonna be in terms of, you know, maintaining the lawns, removing the garbage, utilities, building maintenance, all of that? And I, I, I sort of just wanna make sure that this entity, the Southampton African American Museum, I, I'm not even sure who's on the board, but I wanna make sure that you guys have the wherewithal to, you know, if you have to do some additional fundraising every year. I know you'll probably bring in some money from a special events and things like that. Um, but I, 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 you know, maybe tell me a little bit who's on the board and uh how you plan to uh operate this moving forward, you know, five years out, ten years out. Did, you know, if you could have just.
Nicole?
I didn't know the mayor had, I didn't know if the mayor was saying something.
If it's all right, I have a, a few things to add and, and then I'll. You uh, supervisor, I mean, uh, the village is uh prepared to uh maintain uh the property as far as the lawn and maintenance. Um, we have a very strong uh building maintenance department, uh in fact, an individual who actually helps maintain the cultural center, which is just next door. So as far as uh that particular question, um the, the, the village of Southampton uh is, is prepared to uh maintain uh the property and are building the maintenance. The public works department is looking forward to doing that. Um, and then I will need to jump to run to an Earth Day event, but um just to conclude on my end uh to, to, to thank the board. Um, it's well documented sometimes in the local press that our, our board doesn't agree on everything, but I can tell you uh wholeheartedly that on this particular project, our entire board of trustees agrees very strongly in the importance of this project. So we're very united on this one particular front. Um, so I just wanted to communicate that to the board. And then, you know, thank everybody as well as I uh head out here. Uh, and supervisor, Senator, I mean, the board, I echo your thoughts that the um the Pirates Concert Home and Legacy belongs here. And we just wanted to thank you for your help uh to bring that legacy, you know, back to life and back to fruition for everybody in the village and town uh to see. So I'll, I'll turn this back over to our grant writer, uh Nicole Christian. And then uh perhaps we can just conclude as to kind of what the next steps are. Um, including the uh, you know, the funds for reconstruction, the permission for authorization for additional structures, management, the site plan. A separate grant for uh money for I septic system. And then an amendment and consolidation of the uh IMAs that we have to get us going. But I'll uh, with that said, I'm uh off to Earth Day and thank you to the entire uh town board. Thank you to the Pirates Contraction Committee. Thank you to NPV engineers and everyone else uh involved.
Thank you, Mayor Warren. Alright, Nicole?
Thank you, Mayor Warren. Yes, so um just very quickly, we have developed um a, a fund development strategy. As you know, supervisor, you talked to us about that earlier. Um, I'll be presenting this, of course, to the village board uh when we move further down the pipe with um finalization. But so we have a fund development plan for the project, um the home, the pro- the surrounding property and the um visitor center. Uh, we also have a fund development plan for administration that will include the three-legged stool of any sustainable organization. That's one-third grants, one-third fundraising, one-third fees for services um of which I am putting together with Dr. Key over the next thirty days, because as you know, two of the foundations have asked for a finalized organizational plan um for the center itself. So this is in the works, but I did want you to at least see some of the numbers as you, as you look here. Um, as we've done our um informal and formal intent to apply, um, we have an idea of how much we can ask for, which will go um a bit above and exceed our construction costs. And that's where I want, I, I want the village to be. I want the village to be in a position where we can ask for funding to offset the cost of um the actual infrastructure improvements, but also for some programmatic support as well. And so that's, that's where we are. We're in a, we're in a good position as far as that planning is concerned. And I do hope that we will come back um at a later date when we finalize the organizational plan, the staffing plan. But we have the three-legged stool, um and we're looking at building that out.
Alright.
Nicole, just to follow up on that, uh typically we have a stewardship agreement between a a not-for-profit or other organization on, on the properties for uh for upkeep and, you know, and operational costs going into the future. Who, is the African art museum, is that the entity that's part of the stewardship or have, have you guys formalized that yet?
Yeah, Dr. Key can speak a little bit more specifically about, yeah.
Yes, it, it's, it's gonna be the village. Um, it's gonna be the village. I don't know if Mayor Jesse got off. The village is um responsible for that and we are um the stewards along with the village, but the village will be responsible for that.
Okay, part, yeah, great. I just wanted the public to understand that for obvious reasons.
Yes, the village is, yes, the real.
You know, since the Southampton African American Museum is gonna be managing at least two buildings, um, you know, this uh the Piris Concert as well as the uh Southampton African American Museum itself. Who, who is that entity? Do we have, can you tell me who's on the board of directors?
Yes, well, um, yes, I mean, it's not, it's just similar, just like the Southampton, um the Southampton Historical Museum, just like they have the Halsey House and then they have the Rogers Memorial. It's not uncommon for um these organizations to ma- manage two sites, so we'll be uh similar like that organization. Um, if you, if you realize, we have a walking tour. Um, so it's part of a bigger plan that we have um in partnership with like organizations. So, you know, we have the site from the Southampton African American Museum. Then you'll go to the cemetery and you see the Piris Concert site. And then we have this um organization. Um, so Brenda, if, I don't know if you wanna speak to this, but it's not uncommon for um organizations to manage multiple sites. It's kind of like the open air museum. Um, so it's for the overall sustainability of these organizations um to have these sites. So again, like I said, if you go down the street, you'll see the Halsey House. Um, and then if you go to Southampton Historic Museum, they don't only have the Rogers Memorial. You'll see that there's um multiple structures within that site. So um it's a similar concept, you know, where you're looking to have.
I understand that. And there might be more sites, you know, we have, we have to figure out what we're doing. The Tiana Life Saving Station, which, you know, all staff.
And I know Brenda wasn't, Brenda and myself was involved earlier on with that, with that process with the Tiana Life State, Safety Station.
I just wanna know who is on the, who, who, this organization? Who is chairman of the organization, chairperson of the organization? Who's on the board of trustees? How does that work? Are there any assets that the organization has? Cause you're gonna be asking us to, to turn over these assets to the management of a group that I don't even.
Well, it's really being turned, it's really being turned over to the village per se. That's what, that's really being turned over to the village per se. And then we are working with the village, so it's not being turned over to Sam. It's being turned over to the village. Um, but Sam will be working with the village, so the village will really have more of the control with it. And then if you look at the IMA, the IMA says that, you know, you, it's going to the village, but the village has a right to work with Sam as a manager of it. So it's not being turned over to Sam.
Sam will be collecting money for events and for tickets and for concessions and things like that. So who, I just need to know more about Sam. Who is Sam?
Okay, sure. Sam?
Okay, I am the executive director and co-founder, which I'm sure you all know. And we do have a president of the board. If you want names, I can give you names as, as you want names, Jay.
Yeah, that's all, yeah. I wanna know who's on the board of Sam, yeah.
Okay, Nancy Stephen Smith is the president. And then we have.
And she is, tell them, tell them who she is. She is a retired teacher from the South Harbor School District.
But she was there for thirty-two years, I believe. And we also have a Stephanie Hill. She's the treasurer. She's also been um actively involved at Southampton Historical Museum. And we have Laura Devini as a member. We have another Brenda Stewart who's a member. Um, and I think we have Jim, Jim Banks. He's also a member of the board.
But he's a professor, professor at um Suffolk Community College. Uh, Brenda is uh avid uh accountant and works for the IRS.
Well, Jim is also the chair of our anti-bias task force in town Southampton.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm glad to hear he's involved.
Yes, he's been very involved.
Hoover and Baker.
Yes, he is.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So I hope I've answered your question, Jay.
You do all your, you know, the, the necessary tax filings for the not-for-profit and all of that?
That's all, that's all been done a long time ago. So whatever you need, we could provide for you.
It's a, it's a, it's a five oh one C three corporation?
Yes, yes, yes.
Our tax.
Yeah, and let's speak to that. And this is the reason why we have this partnership, because the funding that we're looking for, the village could not get. So it, it's beneficial for both the village and um us, because the money that we're going for, um, there's no way that the village can get it, because the Robert David Gardner Foundation does not give money to municipalities. So absolutely, we have to be um a good in standing five oh one three C. First of all, the word museum is protected language. You cannot use that language if you are not a chartered institution by the New York State Board of Regents. Um, in addition to that, we, because we're in New York State, we're very privileged that if you are chartered, you are chartered under education law. Um, so we are a chartered organization. Um, and that allows us to have an extension, um just like some of the organizations, like the Parish Art Museum, like the, the uh, the uh Southampton Historical um organization, you know that they have a tax levy um that they get money directly from the school district. So that allows you to do that, because you are a chartered organization under the education law. So we're in a very good position. We're in a good standing as an organization, just like many of the other ones. Um, so we feel that um as an organization, uh we've come very far. Uh, but just like most organizations, we have um a good standing, because we are partnering with um uh the municipality. Now Brett Legs, Brett Legs is, works with the National Trust for Historic Places. And this is one of the things that he recommends is to partner with um the municipality in this type of way. Because for us to take on a building solely by ourselves, it would be too much of an overhead. So this is the optimum type of relationship to have, where we have this partnership and not to take on this overburden on this such of a large building. So this is the best position for us to be in.
Alright, thank you, Georgette. So I don't, I don't have any further questions. Maybe the board does. If not, we can jump the next steps. Any other board questions? Alright, now, I mean, next step, sort of the mayor sort of summed it up before he left the meeting. I mean, you've got the zoning board stuff, the village stuff, you know what you need to do there. Um, you know, the, we need obviously the, whatever the final drawings are on our end so that we can approve the uh, the site plan from the town's perspective, you know, that. Um, and you know, Jim knows what we need to do in terms of uh you know, amending the IMA and all, and all of that. So um you know, there'll, there'll be a public hearing. Obviously, you guys wanna be there for the public hearing uh and participate in, in that. But uh I think that's really it. I, right, Jim? Did I leave anything out?
No, I don't think so. I think you covered points moving forward.
We have a timeline? Do, should we have a timeline? Is there a timeline? Is there a date? What is, what?
Well, I'm a little concerned about amending the IMA and approving the plan in case the village changes it a little bit. You know, if you go through the village process, so maybe you wanna finish up there. Um, with the, with the zoning board, get the variances you need, and then we can approve the same plan that they approved. Is, is what I'm thinking? Um, you guys have anything you wanna say on that?
I had a question for Jim. Will the town still uh hold fee and title on this piece of property?
Oh, sure.
Yes. Yeah, I don't think there's any um plans to transfer the fee title now. It's just, anything will be work, any um work that's done, any agreements through the IMA.
You know, we probably will need something from the, I'm not about, maybe not the village, but from the African American Museum. Some sort of guarantees of insurance and holding the town harmless, because we are, we are gonna own the land. If somebody, you know, got, been, got hurt uh on the property.
Yeah, I think we probably want the village in the, and we can work with the village on that as well as the not-for-profit.
Wanna make sure that we're additionally insured under any of those policies.
Right, and before any work starts, that's sure.
Yeah, I mean, we did, Jim, we did something similar to that with the Tupper Boathouse. You know, we, we really required that there was a demonstration of the ability to operate and so forth. And uh they were very responsive to that. And you know, it, it's, it's, it's a bit of a long process, but um it, it's worked out pretty well.
Well, I don't think there's anything the town needs to do immediately. I think you need to go fit the. Um, well, I guess what we could do, Jim, we could do the CPF piece where we agreed to fund the reconstruction of the house so that we encumber that money for that purpose. I think that's something we can do uh r- almost right away, right? Because we've always.
Does that mean you put it away? That, that means you, you set aside and align on them? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. I mean, a million dollars of CPF funds allocated, uh maybe we won't need to use it all, but reserved for the purpose of reconstructing the house. And I, you know, I certainly will support that. I suspect the board will support if that's what it's gonna cost to put this thing together. Um, you know, we're blessed that we have the funds to do it. So.
Well, we're, we're having the, the, you know, we're having an issue with uh our CPF water quality funds, you know, particularly for things that run over, you know, are recurring, not a recurring cost, but are, are amortized over a period of time. So, you know, one thing we're talking about is to create, actually creating a, a capital uh project and uncover the funds that way. That way they can roll over. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's, it's year by year and you're gonna start again kinda thing. So.
Limited a little bit in terms of the water quality avail- the fund availability.
Right.
Lot left, as you know, in that fund unencumbered. Um, and they're gonna be making a request for that IA system for this property. So.
Yeah.
But that'll, that'll go through the process there.
Yeah, schedule wise, it's not gonna affect this project. Uh, I don't, you know, as far as the timing goes, I think we're probably into the, into the next uh, next year. But I, you know, I, I would suggest having that as a capital project so that, that those funds can be encumbered or encumbered that way and then make that adjustment going forward. It, it just allows you to keep, keep that, that money uh protected for, for a particular capital project.
Do we have, do you have a timeline, Chick? Or, or Bob, as far as the uh when the zoning board application will be heard from the village and then uh whether you'll be going before the planning board as well for any site plan approvals for the, for the uh visitor center?
Yeah, we're actively working on the site plan. Uh, we certainly want to get through this meeting. Uh, the zoning board will be heard next month uh in May. And uh it's hard to predict, you know, how long that process will take. But uh within that timeframe, we expect to submit to the planning board, so they're aware and all agencies have it. Jim, as you mentioned before, secret needs to be completed. We would expect the planning board will take the lead role in that. Um, but either way, it's, it's an unlisted action uh that a determination will be need on, needed for. Um, so it's actually quite tough to predict. We are, as Georgette has indicated, very enthusiastic. Uh, team is working on all cylinders and moving as quickly as we can. And um once we get into that process, uh it's, it certainly will be on the order of a few months.
Sure.
Um, I did wanna take this time to just mention one other cooperative thing that uh Mr. Supervisor, I just wanted to kind of plant the seed. In designing this, we will need one sanitary credit. We are installing an IA system that treats eighteen milligrams per liter. As I said before, in response to uh Councilman Bouvier's question, we're tying in all of the structures on the property, including the existing cottage. Um, but the design was up to about six hundred gallons per day, and we do need one sanitary credit. I had a preliminary conversation with Janet Shearer and David Wilcox. And they indicated it might be an area of cooperation uh that the town does have credits. And you also purchased the two point nine one acres just to the south. Uh, if we have to go outside for a credit, that could be a significant cost to the group. So uh just in planning and putting everything on the table uh as this inter municipal agreement is contemplated, I wanted to um, to, to make you aware of that.
I'll just speak to that real briefly. So we can't use the piece next door, because that was a CPF acquisition and CPF credits can only be used for affordable housing, so that's off the table. We do, we do own some credits that are unencumbered in the Southampton School District, but the idea was to sell them and get some money for affordable housing purposes. So uh, you know, I. So uh, you know, I, I don't, affordable housing funds were used to purchase that property. So I don't, I, 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 I don't know. We're going to have to sort that one out. That's not going to be as easy. The CPF wired credits can only be used for affordable housing. There was an effort years ago to amend the program to allow them to be used for museums. Um, was part of that effort. Um, but the only thing that passed, um, and this was with the county's credits, was uh, libraries and ambulances can now take advantage of the county's credits. Um, and I don't know if the county even has any credits in this area. The town's program is limited strictly to affordable housing from the CPF, which this doesn't comply with. So, um, but we do have some credits for sale. Yeah, it may just be an added cost to your project.
But it's good to have the discussion. Uh, really appreciate that input.
It's a little complicated. I'm sorry if I'm losing everybody on that conversation, but um, I wasn't aware that you uh, you needed the additional flow to meet the county health department standards.
Yeah, the properties.
We tried, we cut as much as we could to even, even just need the one. So like I said, we worked very hard to cut everything. Uh, you know, and we couldn't get rid of that one, uh, that one credit. So we worked very hard to get rid of everything.
One credit's worth like two hundred grand in this, that school district, so. I'm sorry, that's, but that's what the value is. So.
Heavy, that's a heavy dump, right?
It is. Okay.
Leave in miracles.
Yep. You know, maybe, maybe it'll be a little less. So, um, okay, uh, any, anything else in terms of process here, in terms of next steps? Um, can I ask? Because you guys, this is really a question for the board. You guys are just going to spend a, spend a whole bunch of money and a whole bunch of time getting approvals from the village to build this thing out. I don't want them to waste their time if the board's not inclined to allow these structures on the property. So can uh, can I put you guys just on the spot a little bit? Um, you know, there'll be a formal vote later, but is, is there anyone who is not inclined to um, consider this? Proposal?
As my full support.
Julie, you're okay with this?
I'm great with it.
Uh, Tommy John, you're?
From the beginning.
And John?
Absolutely.
All right, great. Okay, so uh, keep going, guys.
My God, thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate everything that you've done um, for us. This is um, just overwhelmingly um, joy right now. And Supervisor, I can't thank you enough for your leadership on this from the beginning. Um, it really does, you know, I know Brenda's overwhelmed. I'm overwhelmed. Um, and your support and leadership on this really does mean a lot because without it, I don't think we would be here today.
I appreciate that, but we wouldn't be here without you guys. You guys are the driving force behind this. It's, our part's easy. Your part is very difficult. There's a lot of work behind you and ahead of you to make this happen. So uh, we're, I think the board, we're all very happy to support the work that you're doing.
Yeah. Brenda, you want to close it out?
I'm a little full right now, so I'm going to try to get through this. I just want to also emphasize that, you know, this is um, a most important project, not just, you know, I want to try to turn and make this a, a whole nother aspect that for so long, it almost kind of appeared that the village was helping us out. And I'm just going to really kind of be open and frank, I hope that's okay, helping the black people out getting this project done. And you know, opposite, I really, we have been helping the village and the, you know, especially to honor this man, you know, it is, you know, I want to go into the details of, you know, what should have happened to avoid all of this. I won't even get into all of that. But I just thank you, uh, the town and Jay and all the board members. I've had personal encounters with Tommy John, and I appreciate you. And I know, uh, the other, uh, John Bouvier, I know you are also supportive. And all the other board members, I thank you for saying that you are supportive. Is, is this a very, very, very important legacy to leave for the town that Georgette and I has been going beyond what I can tell you. And almost, I can't tell you how many people already know about this project. And as you know, we recently had a CBS clip on uh, TV regarding the announcement of getting the uh, property um, landmarked and historically designated, which is now the second African American site to be historically designated in the Village of Southampton, which we all should be proud of. So I thank you all. Have a great weekend and um, moving forward.
All right, thank you. Great job.
And invite them to, you, you don't have an announcement about June? Not yet?
Yeah. And I'm, um, then I'm really going to get full now. After sixteen years of working on this project, we are proud to announce that the Southampton African American Museum is complete. And I have diligently working, I call it the full court press, on um, our celebration is going to be Juneteenth. And if everybody know the importance of Juneteenth, it'll be June nineteenth is going to be the grand opening, and we are having a VIP reception on the Friday, the eighteenth. And so you are all invited. And um, I had kind of sent a little quick questionnaire while Ryan was on, because of course, I'm really very, very mindful of staying in line with the New York guidelines, the COVID New York guidelines. So I have uh, the sixteen page um, that I had somebody from St. Martin to print for me, because I don't have a printer here. Um, but I'm making sure that we go by those guidelines. It's very, very important to me. But it's also, I want to celebrate, so I'm trying to do a, a, a good way to do this celebration. Um, but again, um, very, very excited to announce that the South End of the African American Museum is complete. And again, I thank the town for making that happen.
All right, well, that is, that is great news. So we'll see you there on June nineteenth, so.
Yes, I will be returning home in a couple of weeks.
All right.
I changed my, my, my flight.
Travel safely. All right, so we can uh, change topics here, though we're not leaving the village. So um, the next item has to do with the organic garden proposal. So let's see if we can get um, Charlene in. I think Charlene Kegel is going to be presenting.
Bye.
All right, thanks, Brenda.
Charlene Kegel Betts, and who's the administrator for the village.
Anyone else say?
Um, hey.
Good morning.
Good morning. Anybody joining you on this or just?
Miranda, Miranda Weber, she's.
Anyone else?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay, so um, so yeah, I was approached by the mayor at one point, who's not on a fall anymore, but uh, about some CPF properties that the town owns near seven eleven on uh, North Main. It's not North Main, it's uh, I guess.
North Sea Road.
North Sea Road. Um, I mean, years ago, I, I, I knew there was a plan to do some community gardens or something. I don't know whatever happened to that plan, but we do own quite a few pieces in there. The mayor wanted to sort of beautify the entrance to the village and. Um, so where, where are we with this? The board's not aware of any of this. So you want to kind of introduce this idea?
Sure can. Um, so uh, as you know, the property um, is located, we called it, we call it the uh, the Aldridge Lane property is located um, adjacent to, um, it's right across the street across Aldridge Lane from the seven eleven. Um, it's a property that was acquired um, back in two thousand and one with CPF funds, and it's jointly owned by the village and the town. Um, the property has been, um, you know, we've done a little bit of work on it. Uh, it's a, currently it's a, it's a, actually, I could share my screen and we can talk probably a little more interactively if you don't mind. Okay.
I'm sorry, just to, so I understand uh, the, the CPF property is owned jointly?
Yes.
Just explain that quickly.
Um, I believe we are on, uh, it, it's, the, the, the town has purchased it um, on behalf of the village. I'm not really quite sure. I was, it, it pre, it, it, you know, predates me, but according to um, our records, it's jointly held by the town and the village. I would imagine we had some contribution towards the property at the, at the time of uh, purchase over twenty years ago.
Okay, thank you.
So um, basically, um, I'm going to show you our PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so um, can everyone see the screen?
Could I ask what the address of the property is before we begin?
Um, I believe it's two eighty North Sea Road.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's multiple lots. I don't know. Yes, come. Miranda's going to fix my screen here. How do we move forward? Okay. So um, this is what the property currently looks like as you're driving um, up North Sea Road. It's somewhat adjacent, somewhat across the street from the McDonald's. Um, and um, what the, what the village would like to propose and request permission from the, the town is um, I need to exit. Is for us to take and do, um, there's two things we need to do. In order for any um, greenery or any kind of beautification to be done there, we need access to water. So the village would like to um, install um, a, an irrigation well there so that there is access to water. There's currently, um, there is currently electricity because we do have a police ca, a security camera there in the corner. And um, what we would like to do is um, install some low um, growing perennials, maybe have some sunflowers in the area, but um, something more um, a low lying, you know, beautification project on the corner and in the frontage of the property. Um, it is our hope that if we were to install um, an irrigation well, uh, we would be able to um, a, a large enough well, at some point in time, we could have um, a phased in project plan. We'd like to do is uh, perhaps do some planting and some curb appeal in the front of the property. We'd like to um, perhaps in the, the rear part of the property, um, look towards having some type of a um, community garden and getting a co-op group together. Um, of course, there'd have to be some, some fencing or otherwise, um, it would be subject to, you know, a deer feast there. And um, then um, you know, evolve it over time and make it more of a community area um, that could be shared by the residents. Um, and um, you know, something along those lines. But we'd like to start out with permission, if we could, to install a well. How do I lose? Escape? Okay. Sorry, I'm not the uh, definitely not the uh, the person who is the, the techie one around here. So anyway, this is a Google map of the property. So if you see, this is currently the way it exists. There's an electric power um, station here. Um, basically, uh, there's a lot of uh, folks that congregate in the area. Um, you know, we've had some situations where um, there's been some, you know, people staying overnight in the area. Um, so we would like to take this corner here and up down this property. There's some dead trees that we'd like to remove and basically just put a few um, you know, beautification projects in here and low lying planting. Um, and uh, GPW is currently getting a quote for us. Um, the village would pay, um, you know, would expend the funds for the project. And um, and we're, we're getting some quotes on installation of an irrigation well that can be used for irrigation. And uh, that is uh, that is basically our request at this point on this Green, Green Day, Earth Day uh, celebration that uh, is to have a little green space in the village, at the entrance of the village, and to make it beautiful.
Charlie, who, uh, who mows that lawn now? Is that CPF?
Yeah, our, no, our guys do. Our parks, our parks group does.
I, I noticed that we own a number of parcels in this vicinity, three that for to connect. So we own this piece, which is very deep.
Yes.
And then toward the back end of it, we own two additional parcels leading up to County Road thirty-nine.
Yes.
So, um, and then we actually, two over from this, we own another big piece of property.
There is another piece of property on the other side.
Uh, which is, looks also like it's open from the road. Um, so I, I guess I just a couple of quick questions about the, the use of this property. Are you going to continue to basically mow the lawn and keep it as an open lawn area? Do you use it for any activities or?
We do, we currently do not use it at all. It's just an open green space at this point in time. Um, and we're, our hope is that if we were to do some beautification to the corner and um, try to improve some of the plantings, um, that it would be a place that, you know, maybe we move towards a community garden somewhere on the property as well. Um, there has been some talk about it. There's been some interest. I know that they've been successful in other parts of the town. I think there's one located down in North Sea as well. Um, and um, it has quite a group of folks that, that have, you know, been taking care of that. And um, I do know that you also need to have deer fencing for that piece of a project. Um, so I think that at this point in time, we'd like to just get some deer resistant plantings in here um, and have them uh, you know, kind of, you know, get to the mature point where at least this is something that's a little bit more pleasant to look at as you enter into the village.
What, what makes that unpleasant? Uh, because right now it's sort of open space. I look at it and I see a, you know, an open lawn.
It is an open, yes, correct.
For plantings or is it not going to be visible now? How much open space is there?
No, I believe we're trying to, you know, and the, the security cameras here as well. So we have to have low ground planting. It's basically more low ground cover and something to cover up the utility box.
Okay.
And there's, there are a couple of dead trees that need to be removed as well.
That block the, the site from the road, if a police car wants to drive by take a look on the property, I guess.
I believe, I think.
Get out of the park.
It would just be on the corner. I think if you drove to the front of the property, say, for example, over here, um, you would still be able to see this space here.
And Charlene, you want to, you want to drive a well and install a, a submersible presumably?
Yes.
There are water mains on, on North Sea Road as well as Aldridge.
They are, they are across, um, there are water mains there, but I think the concern, um, the preliminary conversations a few years ago with a community group, community garden group was that they would prefer not to have um, municipal water because of the chemical treatments involved, um, if there were to be a vegetable garden.
Would this require, would a well require a structure for a pump and drain system?
I, 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 I don't believe it would be a large structure. And I, they, we actually have our electrician going over there today to look at the electrical power to see what what size pump would be required and draw out some specs.
It's going to take two forty if it's a submersible. Um, but there's not going to be a tank. It would just. Okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that wasn't part of the presentation, but I just.
No.
Wanted to add before.
No, but it's a good point, Tommy John. Because I, I think that if I'm looking at the sub watershed study, the depth to groundwater is pretty deep. So it's just something you guys ought to consider, but I, I would need to know. I don't know, Jim, maybe you can answer this. Are there any easements on this property? You know, if it was bought twenty years ago, I didn't quite understand how the properties can be jointly owned in that respect. There had to be some agreement as part of that.
I believe there were, uh, yeah, I'm not, uh, obviously I wasn't here as well. I had, had some conversation. I had some previous conversations with Mary Wilson, when she was the CPF. I know there was a couple of different plans for this site over the years. Uh, and I, I do believe there may be, if there is an agreement that was, uh, I'll check, I'll check back at, during the time of the acquisition, look at the files, but I believe there is, there might have been uh, an agreement with the, with, between the town and the village on the, you know, maintenance and care of, of this property. And I know there at some point there was talking about a hiring hall, something, because as Charlie mentioned, there was a number of people who looked for work standing on that corner.
Yeah, because I, I think it was acquired as open space under that provision, but twenty years ago.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. I'll take a look at to see what, you know, I can take a look at the deed and I'll look at the closing documents and if there was any other agreements, but I do recall that, I think it was it was purchased where the town was to buy the property and the village was, you know, take responsibility to kind of manage the property.
All right.
We'll look into that further.
So I, I'm still having, like, I like the view that I'm seeing right now. I think it's really pretty. Um, I can see wanting to cover the utility box.
But that wouldn't necessarily require the installation of a well or an extensive planting plan. Those other trees over there obviously don't get watered. You know, a hardy tree planted in front of it might, might do fine without irrigation, native vegetation. Did you, Charlene, did you develop, is there a planting plan that the village has developed for this property?
Not at this, not at this point, no. We were, I did have conversations with our Parks Director Steve Phillips. And he had suggested a plan would be somewhat limited that, without irrigation. So we thought that the irrigation would be something that we'd be able to and, and install an irrigation well that we could use if there were a second phase community garden installed as well.
Right, I see.
It's a beautiful looking piece of property, you know, when you start to thinking about putting up deer fences, they, you know, there's sixteen-foot deer fences, you know, you might actually degrade the view in some way, you know? I'm just, I'm kind of curious as to.
Right now it's a big grass field. It's gonna, I guess, convert to agricultural use.
I did, Lisa is messaging me. She's having a tough time getting on, but she, she's mentioned, messaging me saying that there is an IMA with the village for the community garden use as well as educational school, school gardens as well. Maybe, you're saying that Laura has mentioned that it actually might have been a town and village purchase. That the village actually contributed to the purchase of the property, but we'll verify that.
Looking on the deed, it has both the village and the town on it.
It does, yeah, okay, that makes sense, yeah.
I guess, Charlene, maybe I'm just a little concerned, you know, you mentioned that people congregate in that corner. Do they congregate in the area where the plantings are being proposed or they congregate?
On the other side, generally.
They're usually on the other side over by, by Seven-Eleven, on the other side of the trees. That's usually where they line up in the morning.
Looking for work in the mornings, basically.
Right, yeah, okay, just don't want this to be perceived as, you know, trying to eliminate that issue.
No, no.
Obviously, there was previous consideration for this because we do have an IMA ready for, for essentially what I believe Charlene is presenting here, you know, for, for a community garden, so.
Jay, I just wanted to say one thing. This was purchased as a Village Hamlet Green acquisition, not open space.
A Village Hamlet Green, so there would be like special events and things like that?
Yeah, park use, garden, community uses.
Would they do like craft shows and things like that on a Hamlet Green?
Possibly. It would be limited. You know, there's, there's a certain number of events they can have in a year.
Right, so they can do some special events here. Once you do the community garden, so that, is that inconsistent, the community gardens with the Hamlet Green designation?
No. No, it's not.
Okay, it's kind of nice to have a field like this.
Yeah, we have, we actually have two parcels involved in this acquisition. One is the larger parcel that you can see from North Sea Road, and that's three point nine acres. And then there's a smaller parcel that's behind the Seven-Eleven, and that's one point eight acres.
And then as well as the parcel that's south of this too, on the other side of the.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different acquisition. And then there's another one that, as the supervisor mentioned, on thirty-nine.
How big is this one?
Well, that's my question. Is it for both parcels involved in the Knights Last Stand acquisition? That's,
I believe this is just the parcel we're requesting to do some beautification work on.
Okay, so that would be.
Three point nine acres.
Nine.
Point nine.
Three point nine.
And you're just looking to do beautification on that one corner, not that entire.
At this point, yes, correct. At this point, we're just looking at the, the corner piece there and some camouflage around the electric utility box.
And where does the deer fence come in? And is it around the whole property or just a certain portion of the property?
No, I, I believe that if we were to look towards a community garden in the back part of the property, it would look, it would be located back there.
So no plans to put the deer fence up just for this?
No, no, no. The only thing we're initially requesting permission for is the irrigation well and to do the plantings, you know, at the border of the property. And we, we're happy to submit a plan as soon as we get the approval for the irrigation. It's just that we don't have a planting plan because there's, it'll, it'll differ greatly if there is irrigation on the site.
Okay, any other questions for Charlene?
Is the intention to do native plantings?
Yes, yes.
So procedurally, if the board's inclined to allow it, I mean, we, we need to see a specific plant. Exactly, I am concerned about the losing the visibility of the field. So, you know, that would basically say what types of plants so that we can review it and where they'd be located.
We're happy to, we're happy to submit the plan. If the irrigation well is approved by the board, we are very happy to submit a plan. Once it's devised for approval, before we move on.
All right, and I think, you know, Councilman Scavoni's question about whether there's any structures associated with the irrigation well. And I don't, I don't know where sanitary systems are in this area, but you want to have at least like a hundred-foot setback.
We actually, yes, that's correct. Apparently, there is no, we're cleared, I believe the setback, I spoke to Gary this morning about it. He said that, you know, it's basically cleared. There's not, there's no irrigation, there's no septic concerns within the, the area, the proposed area for the well.
So, you know, I would just suggest, Charlene, that if you're going to do an irrigation well, you know, I understand the, I want to say Garden Club, but that's not the correct organization that you were referring to before that, that wants to do this. That they were concerned about the chemically-treated, municipally-provided water as opposed to taking water out of the ground. That may not be a better benefit. You know, we have some irrigation wells that are, you know, that are spray irrigation in other parts of the town where the groundwater is, is not, not that good. So I don't know how you check that or maybe check with Suffolk County Water or the DEC to see if there are other wells, other irrigation wells or even drinking well, water wells in that area. Just to give you a better, you know, sense that you're not going to be pulling up water that may not function so well.
You know, typically when, when these wells are put in, it's because it's less expensive to irrigate with the well than to pay Suffolk County Water Authority for the water. It's, it's usually economics. That's why farmers put in wells because they're using so much water. And they don't want to have to pay the, the cost per gallon. They'll pay for the electricity. But, you know, I think that, you know, just show us the location of the well. I think where it's proposed and show us the landscaping plan and then we'll take a look at that. And if the board's inclined to support the idea. Jim, what do we do? We do that as a, an amendment to the IMA or?
Yeah, well, we might not even need. Yeah, I'll have to take a look at the IMA and see what exactly it says. But it does, according to Lisa, the IMA already provides for the village to be running this.
Yeah, Lisa?
Jay, the IMA does provide that the village supplies all the utilities and, and takes care of those. So, you know, they, it would be permitted under the existing agreement to install a well if you decided that was appropriate.
But what is it that we have to do? Just approve a plan, a landscaping plan?
I think, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Probably don't have a whole lot to do.
Yeah, and, and approve the installation of a well.
Right.
Okay. So, Board, I guess we could just wait until we see a more detailed plan, right?
Good thing.
And then we'll make a decision. All right, any other questions for Charlene? All right, thank you, Charlene. Happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day to you.
All right, Board, I think we're getting to the end of the open section of the work session. We took care of everything else, false alarm building, we did updates. So is there any other business before we go into executive session?
No, do you want to, you want to give ten minutes and, and do it one?
I just, I wanted to say one thing about Sun TV. So you may have already noticed now that if you turn, turn on channel twenty, there's some interesting local programming. Some of it's ours, most of it's LTVs. But even LTV, it's an East Hampton channel, public access channel, and a lot of it is very related to Southampton. I think the programming already is so much better than what used to be on channel twenty and so much more relevant to our area. So, but I, I do want to encourage people, including the board, just to really to take advantage of channel twenty. To, if you know people who want to have their own shows or any kind of content that they want to broadcast, it's, we're looking, we're looking for more content. So I know, Rick, you took advantage of it and you got some, a show on. But, you know, but it's, it's really easy to do and will help you. So if, if you're interested in doing it, if you want to have your own interview show, you can do that. Anybody who's listening could take advantage of it. If you have a talent that you have that you want to share and, you know, channel twenty is there for the whole community and it'll get better and better the more people use it. So, please take advantage of it. And check it out. You know, I think you'll find it interesting if you haven't already turned on channel twenty. I think you'll find the programming quite interesting. Okay, um, so I know, John, you said you wanted a few, a few minutes before we go into executive session. I have, also, we'll have a one-thirty call. I'm going to have to get on with the governor's office. So I guess I'll make a motion to go into, to end our work session, go into executive session on acquisitions and contracts. I'm not seeing any personnel matters. At least not at the moment. So I'll, I'll make the motion to end our work session, go to executive session on acquisitions and contracts.
Yeah, I'm, I, I have to answer two calls that we had during work session. So I have to answer those calls.
You want to start at one, one oh five?
Well, if you got a call at one-thirty, you know, you can go ahead and start. I just, I just need to return these calls quickly.
So, yeah, all right. So why don't we start around one? I have a couple of calls to make too. So let's, let's, uh, let's start at one. I'll have to take a break at one-thirty and then we, then I can come back. All right. So I made a motion to end session, go into executive session, second by Councilman.